Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody. Welcome, thanks for coming. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. A second?
A second, Steve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. And then I need, we've got action items out of closed session, I believe we got some closed session minutes. December 18th is January 8th. Can I get a motion to approve them as presented?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Betsy, please.
Yep, Burr?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
You're right, bitch?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes.
Moving on, public hearing, we have a proposal to waive Veterans Day as a school holiday. So I guess we're opening up a hearing for board, the public. Anybody got any comments? Is that what we do?
Yeah, no, this is, there's an opportunity. One of the things that last year we done was, if, I'm not sure how many of you may or may have not attended our events, we celebrate our veterans on Veterans Day, our elementaries in our schools have ceremonies, and they've been extremely well received by the community. And one of the things that we talked about was just the lack of knowledge that a lot of students have about our veterans, our servicemen and women. And if you haven't been to our celebration and our, on our events for our veterans, I strongly suggest, but it's a day of learning about our veterans, honoring them, the ceremonies, there's music playing, several parents, community members are there, and so it was a day for us to educate our students about that. So, matter of fact, I had even contacted a gentleman at the VFW because when you come into, you want to make sure you're respectful. And I'd said, you know, this is what we do, and they didn't have, have an issue. Matter of fact, that was a great activity that we honored our veterans and had ceremonies and respect out of that. So, that's where this kind of evolved, and so that's what that's about.
Okay. We did this last year, too?
We did, yeah.
Okay. Any comments? Board, public?
Do we have any comments? I've never participated.
No, no.
If you don't mind, I'm going to sit just for people who got calm here.
What's your name, though? We need your name.
My name's Jay Hoffman.
Okay.
I'm the commander of the Chatham VFW. So, I'd like to find, I'm not sure who you talked with, Dr. Wood.
Yeah, last, last year I spoke.
Of any contact.
Yeah, spoke with a gentleman last year. I'll look back in my notes and see, see who that was.
I understand, you guys do put on, it's a really great program, really is. I've been the commander of the VFW, this is my third year, and last year was the first time I attended. And the only reason I really saw any invite is because my daughter started going to school there. So I hadn't really seen any communication between the school district and our veteran service organizations. And I don't doubt you talked to somebody from the VFW.
Yeah.
It definitely never got pushed up to me or to our board of officers. Because I've been saying, you know, I, I hope that we can build a relationship with the schools, because I think the program is so great. I have a few problems with not having this a day where the children are off, and I'll also take a step further, any faculty that you may have that are also veterans, I think not only do they deserve this day off, they've earned that day off, but I also think that it then cuts into the community programs that we have. And to my right here, we've got the commander of the legion, we're all legion members, and some of us are also dual VFW members. We put on a Veterans Day ceremony every year on the 11th at 11 o'clock, and I feel like a great deal of the community is now being restricted from being able to participate in our program. And, and you know, it's up to the parents and the, and the community to make that happen. I absolutely hope you guys continue with yours, but I'd like you to respect that we have ours. This is one of the big things for us, is, is doing these ceremonies in the community. It's the way that we, as veteran service organizations, and I think a pillar of the volunteer organizations in Chatham, are able to reach the community.
Sure.
Are able to inform from our perspective as well. So I think that should be taken into very strong consideration. There's also, not just in Chatham, there's also the Veterans Day Parade, that Springfield hosts. Now we're missing the children there. And, and having a child in school, and these days meaning so much to me, especially since I've been active in these organizations, I can tell you, she won't be there on that day. She'll be with me at the ceremonies.
Makes sense. Makes more sense.
But I, I think, I think there's a way that the school board and the American Legion and the VFW, and we can all work together on improving your programs, improving ours, and getting the children out. But we'll always do it 11th day of the 11th month at 11 o'clock.
Well, let me, let me tell you what, let me, let me give you, how about I give you a call tomorrow?
No problem.
Fair enough. Let me give you a call, and I'll come meet you, and we could sit down and talk about that.
Yeah, and we can, we'll get, we'll get hooked up with Mary here, Mary, Chief Commander of the-
How are you, Mary?
American Legion.
I would like to add one thing, and that is, 2018 is actually the 100th anniversary that Congress made Veterans Day an official holiday.
Ah, oh.
So, I mean, it's 100th anniversary of the day.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you coming here and sharing that with us. Like I said, I'd love to follow up with you and, and talk about that, because definitely I want to work with you on that. That's okay. Yes, sir?
Dave Rogers, past commander of the American Legion, I'm also an officer over at the VFW. And I want to also let you know that I have, last time I deployed, I was involved in a few of the ceremonies at the schools, and they're very nice ceremonies and heart wrenching and everything else. But I think it's a bad idea not to honor veterans on Veterans Day. And I don't know if you've ever been to our ceremony on Veterans Day, but a lot of our crowd is Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and none of those young people will be able to participate in our ceremony, so, which I think is very important. And I think they get a lot out of it, they enjoy it. So, I would ask that, that it be considered that it stays a holiday. There's a lot of holidays in the year, I understand, and I don't know the whole reasoning why we're trying, is, not, no disrespect or anything, can you briefly, or just tell me why we don't want, why the board doesn't want to have veterans as a holiday anymore?
Yeah, it's not, I personally don't believe it's, do you have any, I mean, I could add to that. Anything, Jen, or? No, I, you know, when I, I, matter of fact, I was administrator down by Scott Air Force Base, and we have heavy military presence. And one of the things that we did was transition into, we had ceremonies during the school days, because part of the communication was, there was so, there were so many in our, particularly youth in our community, that just didn't have an appreciation or an understanding, and, and celebrate our, you know, men and women in our service. And so, that, we worked with them, and we actually had, you know, school on those days and had those activities. Last year, we had it on a weekend, and so it worked out to where it didn't fall. This is the only thing that's different, this is the first time we've actually approached it being on the calendar, so.
Well, we have tried to get into the schools, particularly the high school, we have a program through the VFW called Voice of Democracy, and what's the other one?
We got, for the middle school, it's the Patriot's Pen.
Where we encourage young people, the Patriot's Pen, they write an essay, we have a theme every year about patriotism and what the country means to you, and Voice of Democracy, they present a speech, and I think from our district, was it third place you won, or? Anyways, there's a couple programs that we're trying to get involved in the schools to try and bring our, bring the patriotism into school, and it seems to me that when I first joined years ago, we had teachers, I mean, one year we had over 100 entrances, particularly from Patriot's Pen. Now we're very hard to get into the schools and get the youth involved, and we're trying, is what I'm saying.
Sure. If you don't mind, I'll riff on that, because I was the one making contact with the school. So, and I feel these go, go hand in hand. Once again, it's the communication between the school district and our organizations. It just doesn't feel like, like we have it. And I, I think, I meant that, I think we're volunteer pillars in this community. Homecoming, that's American Legion. Best fish fry in the area, that's American Legion.
Shameless plug this Friday.
Yeah, that's the, no, no.
And then, and then, you know, we're really changing, we're back to back All-American posts, and there, there was only three posts in the whole state that did that. So we're, what I'm saying is, not just bragging on us, but we're doing stuff in this community. And we want, we want this day, right, to do our ceremony and work with you to get more kids out here to ours, and I want you guys to keep doing yours together. But the communication between the school district and our organizations, we feel goes a little further than just, just this day. You know, I actually, I know it said it was posted, I don't read the newspaper, so that's on me a little bit, but I just found out about this today, and it would have been great to have been, I think we would be two good organizations to consult.
Well, no, I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you expressed that, because I think it's important that we do have a great relationship.
I might add that the American Legion also has an Americanism essay contest, and it's a scholarship. It varies from each grade level, and they pay us 1,200 dollars.
Can I enter? No, I'm just kidding.
And we do send, like, young men to Boy State every year.
Girls?
They, Girl State, that they go to Washington, learn how the government works. We send youth to the police academy, we sponsor Boy Scout troops, so we're involved all the time with the community, so.
Well, my wife and one of my daughters actually went to Girl States.
Yeah, and you know that, it's a great program.
It's a great program, absolutely, so. Another plug.
I guess the last thing I would say, and I'm sorry, Dr.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
One of the speeches I gave years ago, and I've tried to print it off, my printer jammed up, but anyways, President George Washington once said that the, what was it? I can't quote it, I'll say, paraphrase it, but, the way that the youth will want to join the military in the future, whether they agree with what's going on or not, and there's multiple thoughts about that, but the way they're going to want to join the military is how they see the veterans of the past treated.
Sure.
So if they see holidays for, you know, whatever going on, but then Veterans Day, all of a sudden, we're not celebrating, and I'm not saying we're not celebrating at school.
Right, no, I understand.
But if they can't come out and celebrate in a, in a square with us anymore, and they can't go into praise and all that, but if they don't, they see the, the overall thing is the veterans kind of being moved down the ladder is what I'm looking at, so.
Well, we don't, we don't ever want that to be the situation.
Right.
And I, and I want you to know, we respect and honor, and I'd like to have further conversation with you, and, and talk about that, because we do, you're a tremendous resource, and we need to have that partnership in the community, so, you know, I think that this right here is allowing us the opportunity to do that, so I'd love to, I'd love to. Yes, go ahead.
I'm Jerry Kowick, I'm the district commander for the American Legion, 21st District. We take care of the Sangamon, Christian County, McCubbin, and Montgomery County, and we see a lot of this going on. And we really respect the school boards for what they do for the young people, but we still like to see them have a day to honor the veterans. I myself am a 37-year veteran of the military, and I thank the military and needs our respect. Thank you.
Anybody else? Got any thing they want to say, or comments, or?
I think that, personally, I think it's great information, and I can assure you, anyone in this room has the utmost respect and appreciate your service and what you do, and so we will, I'd like to follow up with you tomorrow if I can.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to contact you.
What's your name again, I'm sorry?
Jay Hoffman.
Jay, I'm done, so, great, we'll follow up.
We don't want to vote on this.
Nope.
No.
Let's move the table.
No.
So, if I need a motion, then?
It's a move.
Correct. What they do is-
We're not, we're not going to have a vote on this tonight, it was an action item.
Can I make the motion, we're both to reject it?
May have already happened.
Well, certainly after conversation, but I want to say, as, as you walk away, well, you're welcome still, Mike, but understand the great deal of respect that I know I have, and I know the board members have, for what you do and the sacrifice for the countryside, I appreciate it, and we'll definitely take all of that into consideration.
We need to vote, we'll go then, Betsy.
Just an all in favor.
Just an all in favor, we have a motion in a second.
Thank you.
Come on, right, right there.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your service.
You know what? Thank you. You actually do so much to me.
All right, we got a motion in a second, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, communications, good, we got recognition of a Ball Elementary first grade teacher.
I'm excited tonight to have one of my first grade teachers here, Kathy Hookstein. I think we all know, and we look at teachers as being somewhat of superheroes, and we expect a lot of them, we expect them to teach reading, writing, and math, and Mrs. Hookstein does all of that very well. But the most important thing we charge our teachers with, and ourselves with, is the safety of our students. And she has a student in her class, and his mom is here also tonight, who, in the classroom, she was doing what she does in teaching, and this student walked over to her, and she looked at him, at first thought that he was sick, she thought he was getting ready to throw up. And she was getting ready to kind of usher him maybe to the nurse's office, and then she realized very quickly that his face wasn't turning white, but instead turning red, and he was in fact choking. And he had swallowed a dice, and she performed the Heimlich maneuver. She had never performed the Heimlich maneuver before, and it took a few thrusts, right, Kathy? But it worked, thank goodness. So, in fact, she is a superhero for us, and definitely for Camden's mom and dad. And I would also like to praise your son, because your son did exactly the right thing also, and knows that his teacher's a superhero, and went to her instead of trying to fix the problem himself or even going to another student. So, I'm very proud of him for that, for reaching out and letting her know that he needed help, and proud of her quick action for responding and saving his life, so.
Good job, Kathy, thanks.
Thank you.
Also, we got recognition for, let's see, we got a facilities, somebody saved us from having a lot more fire, didn't they?
We do, is Jim, was it Jim?
Jim's here.
Oh, Jim. Mike, I mean, I can speak on that, or you can?
Go ahead.
You might have to save me. Unbeknownst to many, fortunately, we had a fire at the high school, and it was contained, it was in one of the exchange units, air conditioning units, and, you know, this could have been really bad. I mean, this was a situation where we actually had a unit catch fire, and a result of Jim, as well as other staff, you know, going through their routine and checking things, they're, they smelled something. Jim happened to be in the area, without hesitation, took to, put the fire out with an extinguisher, I would imagine, I'm not-
Yeah, well, there was some hesitation, because in my panic, I walked right by a fire extinguisher, like, three feet away that I didn't see in the room, it was, I knew there was one at the front door.
And it was the first day back after we had, had our break, and we had in-service that day, and so we were able to keep the, the teachers, they actually had to remove the staff for a couple hours from the building to air it out, really, that was the issues, the smell that goes with it. But at the end of the day, it's easy to talk about it now, because Jim and his actions, and how quickly he was able to extinguish that, make sure that there was no further damage, because had it been probably five, six, seven minutes down the line, we might be telling a different story right now. But I just want to thank Jim and staff, as well as the other staff there in the building, not only for the way in which he responded and put out the fire, but I also want to thank the rest of the staff and how they handled the situation in regards to moving to other areas, it was disruptive to their day. But at the end of the day, Jim Wolf saved the day, and I just want to thank you on behalf of the school, community, and Ball Chatham for your response to that, because it could have been a really bad situation.
Careful, we have a fireman in here, they helped.
They did, but you told me they didn't do any, no.
Well, everyone, yeah, we were trained to do that.
They surely did, because when I showed up at the school, as a matter of fact, one of the firemen was coming out of the area, they were taking fans up there, and it just couldn't have been handled any better, so on behalf of everyone that did respond, thank you, and Jim, of course, for putting that fire out.
Appreciate it.
And Jim, you're welcome to hang around the rest of the minute if you'd like.
This past my fair time.
Return whenever you'd like, we won't make any less.
We'll be back to work in about 11 hours.
Oh, okay, well, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Also, we got some good news, the high school, we've got to recognize our Illinois State Scholars. Looks like we got another standard list here.
This is also, I believe, published in the paper as well.
I, I'd like to say that I'm very pleased that we have, the board has an opportunity to recognize the Illinois State Scholars, and you can just see from the length of the columns that there are a lot of very dedicated students, so I'm glad that this was presented to us. I believe this is the first year that that's happened since my tenure, so thank you.
Very proud of the students, Nancy, great achievement, yeah.
Yeah, and it's not just the high school, it's kindergarten on up, you guys had them all too, so, great job.
That's a great point.
At this time, if there's anything on the agenda that anybody would like to bring before the board, that's an opportunity to stand up, state your name, we'll give you about five minutes, and you can tell us anything that's on your mind, anything on the agenda? Nobody? Okay, looks like we got a transportation annual report, Mr. Lovelace?
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Clearly, the good news is all about superheroes, so it's only fitting that transportation would be here this evening.
Whoa.
No, I couldn't, I couldn't resist.
You got a K-bone?
All of the good news, clearly I was at the bottom of the list, so that's probably also fitting, so. A lot of this presentation, it's, it's not new information, a lot of it is historical, and I continue to add data to that, so I'm not going to try to touch base on everything. I think you guys have seen a lot of the information, I try to keep adding data to the end of it, so there's a, a lot of comparative analysis that can be done. If you have questions about anything, obviously I'm more than happy to answer any of those. Few things that I think that I would like to highlight. Our buses, this just shows the fact that we own 46 of them now, we have eight buses that are leased, which is what we did last year. This talks about our, our oldest buses, right now we've got six of them that are 2003, which is pretty old, and, which was some of the, some of the reason that we opted to lease buses this, this last time around, was to try to help offset some of the aging fleet quickly and without a great deal of expense. And we talked about what the downside was down the road, and we're, I'll try to address that before we get done, and I'm sure there'll be some questions, but. Really wanted to, this is, sort of shows the, the history of the buses, our fleet, talks about our, our fleet vans, and our, we still have five of our vans that we use for a myriad of transportation throughout the district. Primarily, we use that for, we use it for mail, we use it for mostly co-curricular events, golf, tennis, some of the, some of the smaller groups that don't need a bus, and don't need the activity bus, they can, they have, you know, five or six students that they're going to take someplace. All of the mileage that we do use on those vans, though, ends up in our non-reversible mileage. Our fleet cars, again, we still have the white, the three white fleet cars that we use, that's used primarily by staff, going to conferences, those kinds of things. I did put on the, on the sheet what the estimated value is, it is just an estimate. I use the same, I use the Kelly Blue Book, just to evaluate the, so it's, it's a bit of an evaluation or a bit of an estimate, it's not, certainly not a hard number. I'm not going to talk about the charts right here unless you, anybody has a specific question, I'm going to sort of, these are things that you guys have seen every year, it is just historical data, and then the current year. And there are a lot of them, so I will, I do want to talk a little bit, this is, this is not a new slide, it's pretty consistent, a lot of the, the numbers in red, we have some plate maps on those areas, those are the number of lots in those subdivisions. Some of the other areas, we know there's still development going on in those areas, we don't have the exact numbers, so I've just sort of given some estimates about what's, what's been done in those areas, approximately how much is done. About the fifth one down there, the apartment mark, which is west of Mansion Road from the current set of apartments, they've got four units in there now that we're picking students up, and it looks like there could be eight to 10 more, based on the way they have it graded, and some of them have foundations poured already, so it's, it's going to be a, a pretty big complex when it starts. It most likely is going to be just about as large as the one that's right there on Mansion Road now.
So how many students are we picking up at the four apartments that we have now?
I think there's about, I think there's about four right now. I know they're not all full, but I think we have about four students, I think there's a high school, a high school student, and then I think the rest are elementary. Not, not very many right now, but again, I don't think all of the units are, are completely full.
But you believe there's plans to build eight to 10 more in units?
When I, when I went out there-
On top of the four that are already there?
Yes, I drove, I drove around out there and just sort of, like I said, I think there were, there were three foundations, I think, that were poured, that they hadn't started construction on, this was probably in November, and then it looked like there was at least four to five other areas that had been graded and rocked, like they were preparing to start, start doing that, so there's-
So easily we could pick up 40 or 50 students based on the four?
Yeah, I think, and if you look at the current apartment mark area, that's further to the, further to the east up there.
And that's all zoned in our district?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, that actually is- And that actually is... It is right on the boundary that goes to Chatham, where the other one is actually GES. So, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but they're not all going to the same building, which is probably a good thing. I mean, they're not going to the same elementary. But the boundary line runs on the street that's on the east, the east boundary of I feel like I repeat this in the next couple of slides. Every year, we talk about things that we can do to save money. They're really suggestions, they're not, they're really ideas of, these are things that are out there that we don't have to do in transportation. For example, summer school is an example, something that we don't have to do. We could, you know, we could stagger the start and end times larger and use our bus drivers longer during the day. And that means we wouldn't have to employ as many. We can't find enough as it is, but if we widen that, we would be utilizing those staff differently, and we could piggyback them so that they could do multiple routes instead of two. Maybe they do three. Eliminating some of the non-reversible transportation that we do, those students that live within a mile and a half from school. That number hasn't changed dramatically from year to year because essentially, almost all of our schools have a hazardous route. Plummer, for example, basically blocks Oakbrook. So really, nothing in Oakbrook would be considered within a mile and a half because it has a hazardous route. So we get reimbursed for all of those students. It essentially would be most of Old Chatham that goes to Chatham Elementary, could be part of Quail Meadows, but it essentially is about two bus routes that would pick up Old Chatham. Ball, GMS, GIS, they all have Chatham Road or Walnut that runs in front of the school, so that's all hazardous routes. So anybody who lives on the south side of that would, we would transport them and still get reimbursed. So it's not a big number. Couple of bus routes, two bus drivers. At one point, we estimated it around $50,000, $50,000 to $70,000. Now, if it's salary-wise, for me, that maybe is a big number, but it's, from the transportation budget, it's not, it's not a big number. Charging the transportation fees, we have a large group of transportation trips that we take that just gets categorically denied. Any of our co-curricular trips, any of our athletic trips, any of our club trips, any of our after-hours trips, those are all just categorically denied. I know there are some districts that charge extra, charge fees for those, just as there are some districts that say, if you want to ride and you live within a mile and a half, we'll charge your fee. So there's lots of different options on how we might mitigate some of the cost to doing Travel policies, like I said, these aren't things that you haven't seen before. Some potential issues, obviously, growth in the district. That's not, that's not a new topic. Hiring and retaining staff in transportation, it's something that we still fight. I know Ashley, Ramadha, and I, last summer, developed a recruitment plan, went out on lots of hiring boards, brainstormed a number of ways to try to find people. And it was marginally successful. We didn't spend a lot of money because she was able to find ways to do these things without spending a lot of money. And we did attract some. But just about as fast as we attracted them, we were, they were going out the back door, either retirements or, you know, moving on to something different. So we still have a couple of routes that we determined were necessary at the beginning of the year. Dr. Wood and I were speaking about that, trying to alleviate some of the overcrowding issues that we still haven't filled to this day because we don't have staff to do it. Crowded buses, it's a, it's a, it's a common concern for parents and for us. Crowded buses, just like when you're in a crowded building, tempers get short and you get bumped and you don't have enough room to sit. It's, it's, creates other issues for us. But we, you know, we segregate schools so that we're only transporting individual schools at a time, so it's all students from the same school. We don't, with a couple of exceptions, we have a few high school buses that do GIS with them, but that's because they were out in the country. So, and the aging fleet, again, still always a discussion for us. This year, we did utilize on some of our buses, GPS system on 25 of our buses in the fleet. It's a, it has a five-year contract. We've got, we got the first year at no cost. It's a monthly, it's a monthly fee per bus. And what it, what it does, one of the things it does is it allows us, obviously, to track the buses, but it gives us a whole wealth of information, whether or not the buses are using their parking brakes, whether they're using their eightways, if they do the proper procedures at a railroad crossing. Are they on time at their stops? How long do they stay there? Just about anything that we need to know, we're able to ascertain through the, through the system. We don't know if they're on their cellphone, but just about anything else. Just kidding, they don't use their cellphones. But we can just about tell everything, whether they are accelerating harshly or braking harshly or abruptly. It also allows us to, when parents call and say, hey, the bus didn't come by, you know, Johnny missed the bus and the bus didn't come by, we know if they did or not and whether they stopped. And within about the first week of school, we were able to alleviate a number of issues where parents called and said, hey, the bus didn't come by. And we look it up and say, oh, yeah, they were there at 7:12 and 30 seconds, and they waited for 45 seconds with their stop arm out, and they left. Oh, okay, well, we'll just take them to school. So it's, it's an incredibly valuable tool. I'll show you, so far, since, since November, these are annualized savings that we've been able to create simply by recognizing things that drivers are doing, and not that they're doing anything wrong, but sometimes it's a matter of, you know, going this way versus that way, or I've got these four kids, what's the best way to pick them up? And we're able to evaluate that, not only through the GPS system, but also through our Route Finder system. This system allows us to do a comparative analysis between routes, so we can, we can look at it, determine, so you can just look at the first bus. We're able to reduce their mileage by about five miles a day and reduce their, their drive time by about 27 minutes. When you annualize that, it's about a, almost a $3,500 savings annually. Get down to the bottom. This is six buses, and this is just, so far, just from their morning route. Haven't even gotten to the afternoon stuff yet. And that's already paid for the first year.
So these are actual buses?
Yeah, these are, these are actual buses. These, this is, I didn't put the bus number on there because I didn't want to throw anybody under the bus, but it certainly is, oh, sorry, that was bad. But, yeah, so, but this is, this is real life. This is things that we've actually done.
Now, assumingly, though, unless the route changes, it's really, it's a one-time savings because you find out where the inefficiency was.
Yes.
And then that one time you've saved it, from then on out, it should be as efficient as possible.
Correct. Correct. Assuming that, assuming like next year, the route doesn't change, or we add stops or move stops, so it's, it's going to be something that we're going to continue to look at. You probably won't see that kind of number every year unless we add more buses. And this, this is first half of the year on about, well, just the morning, just the morning route so far. So I don't anticipate the same kind of number in the evening because it's not, it's, the issues aren't the same in the evening as they are in the morning typically. So, but those are, those are, you know, live buses that we've, we've really had those savings. So really, this is already paid for. Year two was free, or year one was free, so now we've already paid for year two.
With six buses?
With six buses. Yeah, it's, it's very, it's very powerful. I know Dr. Wood and I dealt with a specific situation, had some concerns about a couple of buses. I was able to pull up some reports right out of this system and give them to Dr. Wood that just totally resolved the situation. It was, it's very powerful.
So are the savings similar across all buses?
No.
Okay. So you can't, you can't say that with our whole fleet, that we covered the whole five-year contract?
No. No, no. There's, there's a lot of buses that, there's just, they're spot on, their times, they're running exactly as you would recommend that they run it. And there's really, there are no gains. But others...
Is that due to tweaking it in the past, or is that...
For the most part, I would, I think four of the, four of the, six of those were buses that traveled out in the country. And what we were able to find by, by looking at what they did, I'll just give an example. A bus was going by the house of a student every day because that student was assigned to their bus, but they never stopped. Student never rode. It was a single-house pickup out on the country, that student never rode. So we called the family and said, hey, is your student going to ride? And they said, oh, no. She got a car this year, she's never going to ride. So we told the driver, said, don't go by. Told the family, said, if you need a ride, call us, we'll come get you, but we're just not going to go by. So we were able to retract the bus so it's not going two or three miles out of his way every day, just to go by a student's house that's not riding a bus. But...
Do we have a lot of outliers like that, or just a few?
We have quite a few. Yeah, we have quite a few. I mean, you've got all of New City and Miami and South, and there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of single-house pickups. It's sort of ironic, but I think in the paper this morning, there was a, there was an article or discussion about first student in Springfield and their GPS systems, and whether, and parents being able to track the buses. We have the capability. Within our Route Finder system, there's a, there's another module, it's called Here Come the Bus, and parents can access that if we chose to do that. I know Randy Allen and I had some discussion in the past, do we really want to open a portal up to the outside for people to see where our buses are? And it's, it's a double-edged sword, okay? It really is. It's, there's a lot of positives, but there's some scaries that go with it. And so, not knowing what GPS was going to give us, not knowing, you had to have GPS before you could even consider it. We don't have GPS on all of our buses. We have 25 out of the 39 that we run every day. So not knowing where that was going to go, that was not something that we wanted to consider. First year using our GPS, like I say, we would have to add 14 more units to our, to our buses to even consider doing that. And I just don't think we're there yet.
Do buses have video monitoring available?
The technology's available, yes.
So we could actually, if there was a problem on a bus, be able to see it like Randy could?
We don't have the technology. It's available, we don't use it.
It's available, we don't have.
Yeah. And it's, it's one of those things that's pretty costly to get involved and to start. And we've just, we always have issues. But knock on wood, we've been fortunate to not have enough issues, or significant enough issues that we feel that there's a need to do that on all of our buses. So that's sort of the gist of the presentation. As we do usually at this time, there are a few things that we go out to seek bids for. Our mechanical supplies, we bid that annually. We do our school bus driver physicals, we do an RFP for that. We, talking about bids to purchase two school buses. And then Charlotte had requested the need for a driver's ed vehicle, and she had asked that I include that and sort of head that up as part of the transportation piece of it, that I, that I sort of take the lead on that. So I've included that in my presentation this evening. Okay. There are descriptors later on in the agenda to address those, but those are the things that we'll be asking for permission for later.
I think that is everything.
I've got a couple of quick questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Jim, the cost savings idea, because I know this is going to come up later and tonight's not the night, but at school start time, did you have a dollar value associated with that cost savings?
Well, I know last year, Dr. Wood and Jim and a number of us sat down with some of the, over at GES, some of the staff there, to try to hammer out what would be the best scenario. And I think until you would know exactly what the scenario was going to be and what the times were going to be, it would be probably premature to try to put a number on it because if I could get, if I could get five bus drivers to triple up instead of double up, there's, that's a number. If it was, you know, 10 high school buses to do that, it would be a different number. So I don't have, I don't have a number for you. So, but again, I think some of that would be driven by what the ultimate solution would be to how we would do that, what it would look like.
Then you mentioned as far as the RFP for buses. With this growth in Chatham, do you need to add buses to your fleet, or are those replacing? And I guess where I'm going is, are we, you know, it'd be awful to get to August and we don't have enough buses for what we need.
We have plenty of buses.
Even for those...
No, no question. We have plenty of buses. We've leased eight, and we, we sold eight to offset what we, what we purchased, okay? That was some cost-saving measures, but also that we didn't really need to grow the fleet. I understand there's some concerns that when we get to the end of year three and our buses, our leased buses go away, are we going to be able to take an eight-bus hit? The answer is no. No, we can't, we can't drop eight buses and have enough. So really, the leases is, probably recall, we were looking, we knew we couldn't go out and buy... out and buy eight buses. So, some of that was a, a short-term fix for a longer-term problem. So, what we've done now is stretched the fix out over three years. So, now if we can buy two buses and, in working with Charlotte, from a budget perspective, that seems doable. So that's sort of where we got to two buses.
So it's not a situation where we're razors-thin in total number of buses compared to growth over the next two to three years?
No, sir. I've got more buses than I have drivers. I, I don't have enough drivers to drive the ones, all the ones that I have. So we have spares, we have non-route buses that we use for trips. So no, that's, that's not gonna be a concern.
So on the bus lease thing, and you, you got my email today, and I was just reading your email.
Okay, so, it was just late in the day, and I apologize.
No, and it's okay. The thing, so basically though, are we setting ourselves up to always have eight buses in a three-year lease? What I was getting at is, you, we have the eight buses, and then at the end of the third year lease, you'll have been used to six more. So there's 14 buses there, and then we're losing eight, you're down to six.
Yeah, I think, and if I, maybe I, we've got the eight, we're gonna add two, so we'll have 10, if you will, then 12, and I was following right with you. Then we get, the third year, we lose eight, we gain, pick up the two, so we're gonna have the six to replace the eight. I don't need the 14, okay? So, basically, at the end of three years, we'll have two less buses than we have today.
I gotcha.
Okay.
So, in essence though, more of the older buses will not be used?
Correct, that's exactly correct.
Okay.
We'll, as we buy the two, we'll move the O3s, if you will, because we won't trade any buses. We'll buy the new buses, we won't trade them, because we don't want to get down to the end and have traded six, bought six, and then lose eight, then we're negative eight at, at the end of the day. And we don't want to do that.
Right. Because, I mean, the weird reality of our district is if every kid in our district rode the bus right now, we don't have enough space, we don't have...
We'd, we'd be starting at noon.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's true.
Right. On the GPS thing, nobody needs that much information.
I always...
And the thought of one, one kid getting snatched up because of people knowing where their kids are getting off the bus is enough for me to say, never, ever, ever.
Well, I will, I will tell you, there are, there are some built-in limitations in that, and I, and I tried to finalize this this afternoon. Our count rep's been out for a couple of months, and I've been trying to finalize it with her, but as I understand that system, the limitations are, if you have a student on bus 10, you only have access to bus 10, like through Skyward. You wouldn't have access to every bus. But, again, there, as, as we've talked about it...
Discreet little mom or dad.
Or a, or a non-pastoral parent, or, and there's a, there's a lot of things that, you know, just give us enough cause for concern that we're just not sure we want to go there.
They can always call you and ask. They've got access to everything through you, and I think that's plenty.
And any parent that really thinks it's important to get that feature put on their cellphone, and they can track their kid wherever they go, I mean, really, if it's a big concern, that can be done.
May not help them in the morning, when Johnny's standing at the bus stop, but...
But every other time, you're exactly right.
Six feet to where they're at. Let me know.
Other questions?
I have a question and a request.
Yes.
As a result of my question last year, I asked for some data on, on non-reimbursable miles, and this was provided. And I'm, I'm requesting if you could update the numbers. You got it?
I did.
Okay, good.
It was tardy from the report.
Oh, that's fine.
So I, I do, I do have it.
Okay, and it's broken out sort of by, not just like a big, long list of everything? Okay, perfect. Okay.
I apologize.
No, no, it's good, it's good.
I do recall you asking for that, but...
What's this show us?
This is both breakout by activity, this is the mileage and the cost by non-reimbursable activity. So, if you have a, I'm just gonna pick, if you have a high school band trip, bands broken out, baseball, football, speech, basketball, volleyball, cheerleading, band, clubs, so every activity that's considered a non-reimbursable trip, we keep track of the mileage, and the cost is based off of a annual cost per mile. So it's...
But you use this information too?
Yeah.
Obviously.
Yeah. See, this is information I had, I just...
Yeah, no, it's fine. Well, I really, is there any way you can take this format and put it, and use the previous year's numbers, drop in the previous year's numbers in this format? Because the whole idea is to have some trending data.
Oh, yeah.
You know, just take last year's numbers and put it in this format, because this is not really that readable.
Yeah.
But the whole idea is, let's get some trending data, so that...
They're all on, they're all on the same spreadsheet, so it's just a matter of putting, putting the chart in there, that's no problem.
Okay, well, thank you.
Anybody got any questions? Any more questions for Jim on this presentation? We'll go ahead and approve the other stuff when we get to on the agenda.
Okay.
Anybody? No? Good. Jim, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to consent agenda items, we got 6-1 to 6-9. Anybody wish to pull any of them? If not, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do a second. Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yep, Morley, yes. Yurivich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Moving on to personnel consent items, we got 7-1 to 7-17. Anybody wish to pull any of them? All right, then do I have a motion to approve as presented? Thank you, do a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Uh-huh, Yurivich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Moving on to old business. Gentlemen, annexation into Chatham. Got our paperwork?
We're here for your motion and a second.
Sounds like a good idea.
Is there something I need to read, other than that we...
Yeah, we, I mean, we're here, Greg, Greg drafted all the documentation for you. Just here, if there's any questions on that, I think we've got through. But what I say is a very thorough examination by your board, and I much appreciate it. We're glad to be able to answer any of the questions and all the questions that you manage.
Anybody got any questions for our potential adoptive parents here?
We brought the stepparents from the library and the fire district.
I've got one question.
Thanks.
And it probably will sound silly, but that part of the line you annex across that water, does that ever give the village of Chatham any water rights?
No, that's all the district.
No, they're jumping.
Okay. Just wanted to know.
Do you want, would you like five lakes?
This might save, this might, this might save us some money.
Buy the job again.
Anything you want to add?
I do not, but I'm available for any questions you might have regarding what the fire department's, uh, moving with annexation.
Fire department owns some property out there.
The fire department does own some property. We own seven acres out across from...
Just down from our roosters, right?
Well, it's right across from our roosters. It was seven acres bought from the Janet Marcy Curry Trust, and our intent is to build a second fire station out there at some point, and hopefully in my lifetime. And the biggest problem is, is that the property's in the county. We want it annexed into the village of Chatham prior to putting a structure on it.
So this'll speed it up.
And so these, these pieces, your properties, will get us closer to that, and the village of Chatham is in, uh, in talks with the other property owners that like the Ball Chatham School District properties and our property. Hopefully, we can connect the dots, and we can see our property annexed into the village of Chatham. And then that will start the process of talking to our architect, et cetera, put a structure out there.
So did you guys see this coming? Or why did you buy land in an area that wasn't annexed before?
We have, uh...
Just out of curiosity.
All right. We are rated by the insurance service organization, and when we were rated about 10 years ago, we were told that our response time to Ball Chatham School District didn't meet the standard from our current location. So the structure of Ball Chatham School District, the intermediate school and the middle school, all have a square footage, which we have to have so many apparatus, so much manpower there within a certain amount of time, we're not meeting that from our current location. Plus, the structure out there in that general area would alleviate that problem and put us within their guidelines and potentially give us a higher rating with their organization.
Got it. Ten years ago, you were rated that way?
Ten years ago, we bought the property approximately nine years ago. We've been working on this project since then. Is that correct?
Pretty much, yeah. Phil hasn't slept since the lines came in.
I wanted to see a road and turn lanes in the deal, too.
That would be the adoptive parent.
Yeah. I'm crying, I'm crying for that bottle, and it's not coming.
Anybody else got any questions, comments? I guess not, then I'd need a motion.
A motion?
To approve the annexation of GIS and GMS into the village of Chatham. Have a second. Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yep, Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now go out and drink your champagne day after a successful vote and my long list of questions last night.
We got through every one of them.
Yes. I expected it.
Yes, so, thank you, guys, we look forward to continuing.
Appreciate it. You're welcome to stay.
So when, so when will you be breaking ground?
Oh, well, as I said, the other properties can truly...
Have to get it.
...intervene.
I got you.
Do they have that right now?
They should, so, negotiation.
Cool.
The village of Chatham. The same arm side, I don't think they're, they're not next to us, okay? You're gonna sign, give it away for them.
You need a map.
Do you need a map? Cool.
Breaking ground, part, nice. We designed it, so we do, okay? So, we're, 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 we're responding to our response criteria. Like I said, we do, we do, we do, we do.
Nice, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Something we should impress for the road.
So Tina, Liz?
Yes.
Are you guys excited that you're gonna be in Chatham now?
Yes, actually. It's a good name, thank you.
We just, we just gotta try to reach out to them all now and try to...
Had a pre-annuation for them.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to new business. We got some mechanical supplies that we need to put out for bid. We do this every year?
Yes, sir.
Kind of a theme or song and dance?
Yes, sir.
You're bringing them?
Yeah, we're just getting, just gonna go out for bids. The next several items are all just permission to, to go out for bids, the professional service, the RFP for the bus physical, bus driver physicals, the school buses, and then the, the driver's ed car.
Okay, so 9-2 is the permission for...
That's the RFP for the bus driver physicals.
Do we, do we have to consider these individually?
Or 9-1? What's that? 9-1, mechanical supplies, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do a second. Betsy, please.
Yep, Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. 9-2, the driver physicals, annual school bus driver physicals, do I have a motion?
You always have one.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yep, Maddox?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. And then 9-4 is permission to seek bids for the purchase of one driver's ed car. We get rid of one?
Yes, sir.
So this would be a trade, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Betsy, please.
Yes. Morley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. Jim, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Uh, moving on, we got, there's a roof. 9-5, GMS, bus lanes, drop-off areas.
Yes, sir. We're seeking permission to replace the bus lanes on the east and the south, apparent drop-off on the south side of the building. Currently, the surface is asphalt, and over the years, just the weight of the buses and the excess traffic is just trashing that asphalt pretty bad. So we're proposing coming back in with some concrete, completely demoing all of that out, coming back with some concrete, and hopefully we'll get years of wear and tear out of that, out of those bus lanes going forward. I think Doug sent some pictures, and it's in pretty bad shape.
And it'll be that reinforced concrete, the same as what we did at Ball, right?
And this is a much more scaled-back project than what was...
Yeah, the original project was estimated at 1.3 million.
Yeah, four or five years ago, there was some talk about...
Quite some time. It encompassed the entire parking lot on the south side of the building, all of that, and actually, all the way around, even on the north end of the building. Not all the way around on the west side, but the north side, the east side, and the south parking lot and lanes.
Okay. Anybody got any questions, comments? Nothing? Do I have a motion to approve the request to seek bids to upgrade the bus lanes and apparent drop-off areas at Glenwood Middle School?
Moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. 9-6, permission to seek bids to replace the roof on the science wing at GMS.
Yes, sir. The roof is original to the building, the building was built in 1993, had a 20-year warranty on it, so that makes the roof about 24 years old. So the warranty was a 20-year warranty, so it's four years past its warranty. There's significant leaks in that roof. They're, they're small, but there's a lot of them, and water has gotten underneath that roof, and so right now, it's kind of, whether it's freezing and thawing, and freezing and thawing, all it's doing is just pulling the roof farther away from the structure. So our proposal is going to be to completely remove that roof and go back in with a new roof, with at least a 20 to hopefully a 30-year warranty based on cost.
Okay. Okay.
And both of these projects will actually happen this summer. So at the end of the school year, both these projects will kick off.
I remember walking in with you guys last summer on that meeting I happened to attend for the instruction committee and it was worse than, yeah, already.
It's pretty spongy.
I'll second that.
Yeah. All right, so we got Brandon and Greg. Betsy, please.
Yes, Maddox?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yurivitch?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. Mike, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, 9-7, strategic planning. We got a presentation?
Well, it's a precursor presentation to a presentation, so.
Okay. You got the floor?
What's that? It's a teaser is what it is. But no, really what we're going to see tonight, should I stand up?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying.
Dancing and singing?
I will, I will. Let me come over. This right here is a precursor to actually a presentation that's going to be much more extensive and dynamic. We're very excited. This has been a long time coming. There have been several individuals that have been involved in this. Originally, we invited 55 participants, community members, you know, parents, business owners. The mayor was invited, representative was invited, directors and teachers, support staff. We really had a nice representation of individuals participating over the summer during this process. And it has taken a little time. But if you're going to do something, it's worth doing well. Sometimes it takes a little longer than you might anticipate. And there are a lot of people responsible for this and involved in this. What I like about the process is that when you look at a lot of other mission statements or vision statements or goals, they're often very extensive. And a lot of times, there's just a lot of words and not a lot of substance. And we really wanted to make sure that the goals that we identified as a district were also represented in our values and beliefs and in our mission statement. It doesn't have to be a long diatribe, four-page statement. Be very concise and to the point so that we can address those things and measure them. So what we're seeking tonight is approval of these. And then next month is going to be really the dynamic plan. We're actually going to have a prezi. I think you're getting used to those. It's a very good way. I'm working actually with Josh and Amy, who has a great deal of expertise. And matter of fact, we have another meeting tomorrow where we're putting this together. But I want to share with you what we're going, can we slide that down just a bit? On our values and beliefs, very, you know, bullet point. We believe that each student can be a problem solver, critical thinker and innovator. I mean, that has to be at the forefront of what we believe because we're here and it's about students. Believe in high expectations, that instruction and learning should be flexible and differentiated. And that's really setting that culture and getting to know our students. And community and family engagement. And that's one of the things I really feel that we're doing more and more of is reaching. I think tonight was a prime example of that. I was very happy to have them here and speaking to us about Veterans Day. I think it's going to, you know, it's another bridge for us. We already do a lot of great things with the community, but this is going to force a greater opportunity because we're committed to it. The collaborative teamwork and effective communication leads to success. That's the community and the staff, staff and community, our students and our teachers, our directors, our administration, the Board of Education. We believe in a safe and welcoming environment, that learning is our top priority. That's what we're here for. It's all about kids. In a culture that promotes positive relationships and mutual respect. And that's one of the things that we change as a community. We're diversifying. We're growing and expanding. We have a much more diverse population. When you talk about diverse, you're talking about students that are coming here for the services that we provide. We talk about ethnicity and culture and all those things that we need to prepare our staff and our students for. We believe that learning extends beyond the classroom. And as a result, we're, you know, our relationship with Lincoln Land Community College, you know, we're extending those opportunities and creating those opportunities for our families. We believe in strong character and personal integrity. If you don't have those two things, nothing else really matters. And that each person adds value to our organization. So those right there, very specific, those are our values and beliefs. Next is our vision. You can get into vision statements. What do they typically say? They typically talk about, you know, 21st century learning and they talk about technology. And they all say the same thing and they sound really good. But when you get down to it, what are you, what's your vision? What's it all about? Ball Chatham is about success. And what is that success? Our community makes it possible. And it does. They support what we do. Our staff make it attainable. The great teachers and staff that we have that work with our students every day make it attainable and achievable. But at the end of the day, our students make it happen. We're a student business. If we didn't have students, we wouldn't be having this meeting right now. So at the end of the day, it's short, it's concise, it's to the point, and that's what we're here for. Our mission statement, "The Ball Chatham School District, together with the community, develops the unique potential of each student by providing quality, challenging and engaging opportunities that establish a foundation for lifelong success and positive contributions to society." It's not that long, it's about that short, and it really contains what we want our students to walk away with. Next, we go into our goal areas. What I like about this is that as a group, we came to consensus that these were our values and this is what we really wanted to embrace. There are five specific goal areas and there are 11 goals. There's not 27 goal areas and 97 specific goals to where they just don't get achieved. So we're very specific and concise. What you're going to see, the first one, is that all students are positioned to attain individual success and achievement. That is the overarching. And the goals below it, there are three specific goals in that area. Academics will be of high quality and engaging. We're going to implement methodology and strategies that define individual success. And extracurricular activities, which include athletics, arts clubs and organizations, will provide high-quality participation opportunities for every child. Now, what we're going to do, the document that we're going to be creating is going to be out there for our community. You're going to be able to go to our site. And you want to see what that learning looks like? Well, you're going to be able to click on a live link that's going to take you to the plans that we have in place at the district level and at the building level to see what we're doing to engage our community. We want our parents to know what it is that we're doing to partner with them and to teach their children. So there are going to be live links. Our next one is staff. The vision is that the district will attract and retain a diverse, well-trained, culturally competent and caring staff. Pretty much to the point. So what we're looking is, we're going to look at our professional development plan templates. All staff will provide appropriate professional development to include cultural competency, best practices and social, emotional competency. Now, when you look at these goals, the way that these were ranked, and I loved it because our representative, Larry Dirks, that worked with us, gave us a template that caused us to force, it forced us into prioritizing. And I love the exercise. So what you're going to see, and I took it out because each one of those goals had a number next to it. So the more points that that particular goal received, the higher it was on the goal chart. So when you look at these goals, I did put where they're at. You know, goal six, that shows you the ranking and where it was in regards to importance of that particular goal. Goal four, as we move, again, we went through there. So goal four, "All staff will be given support and resources for success, including competitive compensation, appropriate class size and mentoring." I don't think you get much more explicit than that. What we're saying is, we're not only going to attract, but we want to retain and we want to keep great staff. And how do we do that? By identifying just what I talked about up here. And we're going to show how we do these things, all of the activities, all the programs, all the training, because we want people to have access to that. Our next goal area is finance. We've really done a great job. And there are all of, everybody in this room and beyond has done a great job in managing your budgets, making sure that we're being fiscally responsible, but still accessing the resources that we need. So we want to, the vision is to be fiscally responsible while balancing competing priorities. What I mean by that is everybody, priorities just depends on the department you're in. I know, for example, Jim is willing to give up buses. No, he's not.
For drivers, maybe.
But Jim's priority, Jim's priority might be a little bit different than Randy's, might be a little bit different than Mike's, might be a little bit different than Josh, for example. But we've got to make sure we understand that they're all priorities, but we might have to rank them at some point. We're going to have links to our balanced budget and audit data. We're proud of the fact that we're doing well and that the audits are coming back and they're clean because all of us play a part in that. We want to maintain a balanced budget that reflects board-identified priorities. We want to pursue all funding sources while controlling costs. So we're going to be grant writing, receiving dollars. We're going to be out there pursuing these things. Short and long-term fiscal planning will identify priorities. And that was very important. Although this is going to be a five-year plan, we're going to revisit it next year. And we're going to revisit it the year after that. Because I think the worst thing that districts or organizations do is they have this process and they go through the planning and they create this document and it gets revisited in five years. In the meantime, they hadn't accomplished goals and priorities had shifted. So we're going to revisit this. This is going to be a living document. This is what's guiding us now, but we could have something that comes up that changes one of our goals, our approaches that we have or the vision perhaps. We go into, another is culture. Our fourth goal area is culture. The vision, the district will recognize and appreciate the diverse nature of our students, staff, families and community members to achieve a sense of owner, ownership and pride by all. And again, we're going to be seeking feedback from our community as we have and as you have, I know you have. And we want to make sure we get those results and that information out there. That way, if they have questions, we can simply direct them to there and they can access that information. Goal number nine, "The district will aggressively seek board-based two-way communication through a variety of methods in order to connect with and engage the community." And I think that is really, really key, particularly in a growing, changing community. It's going to be very important that we make, keep those lines of communication open and expand them even to a greater deal, greater extent. Goal area, another one that we've created, the fifth one is facilities. And as you can see by tonight, we've committed to that. Although this was done a while back and we've identified these, we've already have things underway. You know, we need to make sure that that parking lot is safe. We need to make sure that the roof is in good shape. And so we're committed to this. And if you look up here, "Resources will be available and utilized to sustain a healthy and safe environment." Three-to-five-year facility and project plan that's going to be there so that anyone can access at any time and see what it is that are the priorities from a facility standpoint. And then determine and allocate appropriate, yeah, determine and allocate appropriate funding for buildings and grounds. And then number 11, although it is goal number 11, it doesn't mean that it's not important. If it wasn't up here, you know, being the fact that it is up here means it's important. If it wasn't important, it wouldn't be on this list. And that's provide the necessary tools and resources to maintain assets and infrastructure. So that's going out there and Mike and his staff. And it has to do with our building principles as well, going out there and looking at what our needs are from a facility standpoint. You know, right now, one of our goals is, one of our objectives is to, we're looking right now at STEM programs or STEAM programs. You know, from a standpoint, it's not only learning, it's all about learning, but that involves staff recruitment, that involves facilities. So it's going into your buildings and looking at how we can restructure and reorganize. So all of those things are capsulized in our plan. Like I said, this is just a brief overview. I would say the next presentation is probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of two hours. No. It won't be two hours, but I can promise you to be a little bit longer than this one. But I'm excited about it. I would like to thank the board for their support as we've gone through this journey. We've had some critical discussions about priorities and things that we need. But I've got to tell you, because you're not in all of these meetings, hearing all of these discussions all of the time, but the commitment that this board has to its students, to its staff, teachers, bus drivers, cooks, aides, you name it, is unparalleled. And they're going to go to bat for you at every turn to make sure that you can attain everything that's in this plan. So thank you very much.
Okay, you're just going to have to endure this twice because I need to stand up. Oh, Jen, don't roll your eyes. I can't be in a break. Would you please? Anyways, I think this is fine. This presentation is fine, but I would like to say thank you to all because, do you realize, this is the first completed strategic plan this district has ever had. So. Anyway, we'll wait for the next time.